Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
That's awesome.
What she doing?
Uh huh. I'm not commissioning, I don't get that kind of privilege. I'm just the chief. We, you know, you need to actually, each other. I mean, it's morning, but we can hold something here.
I now call all the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on, excuse me, Tuesday, March 1st, 2016 at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Arson.
Here.
Mr. Chair Penny.
Here.
Mr. Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver.
Here.
Uh, is Robert Smith here? I don't see him, so we'll have the invocation by our attorney. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Lord God, we invoke your blessing upon these proceedings to the end that equity and justice may result for all concerned, and especially that the best interests of our city and community will be served. In your name we pray. Amen.
On the pledge of allegiance of our life, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is a special honor to, excuse me, to be able to do the, uh, the Mayor's Top Apple Award. And, um, I'd like to just welcome all of y'all to, it's hard for me to believe this is the sixth annual Mayor's Top Apple Award. And as mayor along with my fellow commissioners, it's indeed a pleasure to continue recognizing those schools and outstanding leadership in our community. And, um, we feel like this is a, a good opportunity to create partnerships that encourage academic excellence, you know? Uh, your quality of life is important to us as elected officials. So we want to try to honor those schools that have achieved excellence according to, quote unquote, "the state standards." Uh, I always believe that we have more, um, good schools than are recognized, but we deal with what we have. Uh, this Top Apples Award was originated in St. Petersburg by former Mayor Rick Baker. And in order to qualify for the Top Apple Award, the school-based administrators along with the student staff and partners had to move their schools up a letter grade or maintain an A based on the state's accountability system. Um, and I'd like to just take this opportunity to introduce some of the individuals that they have down here. So if I miss somebody, it's not my fault, you know? Uh, we have with us tonight Dr. Ken Paluso, School Board Member. Uh, Dr. Michael Gregor, Superintendent of Schools. Dr. William Corbett, Deputy Superintendent. Laurie Mattway, Associate Superintendent Student and Community Support Services. Uh, Clint Herbig, Associate Superintendent Operational Services. Ward Kennedy, Area Superintendent, Area One. I didn't see Dr. Bright, but he was supposed to be here, but you know how it is, running a, uh, college. He's the Provost of St. Petersburg College. And I'm definitely, uh, pleased to see our friend, Robin Wyke, a former School Board Member. Who's here with us and was a catalyst for urging that we do this in terms of up here in North County in terms of our schools. Yeah. Well, we know how you urge, so you know, it's nothing new. But, uh, first I'd like to read a proclamation. This reads, "Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has made education a top priority by supporting and advocating for its public schools, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs seeks to recognize area public schools for their outstanding academic achievements and accomplishments, and whereas for the 2014-2015 school year at Tarpon Springs, the area schools excel on their FCAT scores with five schools receiving an A grade and met the Top Apple criteria. Whereas thanks to the efforts of the committed principals, teachers, school officials, staff, parents, and students, Tarpon Springs, the area schools have shown great positive momentum by achieving the A grade during a time when increased standards make it more difficult to maintain and improve school grades. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is proud to recognize the 2015 Mayor's Top Apple Award recipients, now therefore I, David O. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby congratulate the Mayor's Top Apple Schools, Tarpon Springs High School, Tarpon Springs Fund and Mill School, Eastlake High School, Eastlake Middle School, Academy of Engineering, and Brooker Creek Elementary School." And, um, what we'll do now is that we can all just kinda gather there in front and turn it over to our lusts, Mr. Clerk.
This evening we'll recognize 14 school-based administrators from five local schools having an A. Each administrator will receive a customizing engraved marble apple, a proclamation, and a personalized banner to display with pride. First school we have is Tarpon Springs High School. Principal Lisa Fadlitis. Assistant Principal Nicole Galucci. Assistant Principal Scott Decanter. Assistant Principal Portia Slaughter. Assistant Principal Monica Tally. Next school we have is Tarpon Springs Fundamental School. We have Principal Dr. Eileen Mills. Eastlake High School. Oops. Eastlake High School, Principal Carmella Haley. Assistant Principal Cindy Green. Assistant Principal Chris Tiscani. Assistant Principal Dwight Latimore. Assistant Principal Sean Anderson. Eastlake Middle School Academy of Engineering, Principal Karen Hissar. And Brooker Creek Elementary School, Principal Donna Geringer. Assistant Principal Abby Canata.
We'll, um, go to any public comments on this item, but I tell you, it's, it's always a pleasure to recognize our schools as well as the opportunity to recognize our students for the, the great job that they're doing. And it's a reflection, not only for the school itself, but the teachers that are there and everybody that's involved. It takes everybody to actually make it a success. So the only thing that could have made me happier if we had more of the schools, uh, to participate tonight, so. Thank you, sir. I don't know if St. Petersburg College is here. Um, since the state, I know that the President is here somewhere. Is the President here? Uh, do I sell bills somewhere around waste management? Mr. Harp. Well, even for those who aren't, that's not here, and those that are here, uh, they help to defray the cost so that this is not a burden on the taxpayers. These individuals, businesses, organizations, uh, help to contribute to make sure that we recognize the, uh, schools. So we definitely want to thank them for their contribution to this affair tonight. Uh, any public comments on this item?
Mayor, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I actually would like to make, uh, one additional apple presentation.
Yes, sir.
If I could, before public comment. Um, and before I do that, I first just want to say, uh, and extend my appreciation to the School Board members that are here and the district officials and the school-based administrators. Uh, as a teacher myself, I, 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 uh, I teach. I, I gave the FSA today, uh, today and yesterday. Uh, I know that you guys are in the middle of your FSA testing window, and for you to be here this evening, uh, is very much appreciated. So thank you for being here and congratulations to all the schools for the well, very well-deserved award. Uh, but at this time, I would like to give one additional apple. Uh, as was mentioned, the Mayor's Top Apple Award was originated over a decade ago by St. Petersburg, St. Peter, St. Petersburg's former mayor, uh, Rick Baker. Mayor Archie thought that we too should reward our local school staffs for their academic achievements. So for the past six years, under Mayor Archie's leadership, uh, education has been a top priority in his office, and we have recognized local schools that are, that have received a grade of A, uh, for their hard work and for their dedication. Mayor Archie has stepped outside of the traditional role of city government in order to support local education. The mayor has engaged sponsors, as, as we just awarded, uh, some of the, uh, the sponsors. He's engaged sponsors in the community to join him in recognizing schools each year with the presentation of the Mayor's Top Apple Award. Um, so for this reason, and, and many others, on behalf of our board, on behalf of city staff, the city clerk's office, uh, it's very much my pleasure to present to our mayor, David O. Archie, this golden apple to, uh, thank you, Mayor, for being an advocate for education in our local schools.
Yes, sir.
I just want to echo the comments that were already made, as beautifully stated. In terms of, uh, I deal with a lot of mayors, and I can tell you without any exception or any hesitation that you have a champion for, for education in Mayor Archie, and I want to thank him. Uh, from the bottom of my heart is Superintendent of Schools for his commitment to education. And even though we look at a letter grade as the end-all, I want you to also recognize behind those letter grades are increased graduation rates, increased high academic standards in AP enrollments in the Tarpon Springs area, uh, increased AP enrollments, increased honor enrollments, increased career and technical, uh, recognition, increased industry certifications, increased attendance, increased, and the list goes on and on. So whereas you, you're recognizing a state recognition, which I, I certainly say thank you very much, I want you to know that you are impacting the lives of, of numerous students uh, along the way, and you're changing their lives. You're changing not only their lives, but the next generation and next generation. Uh, Mayor, thank you for being a champion of education, and thank you for not only talking the talk, but walking the walk, and when it comes to truly believing in public education and living that, uh, belief. I'm very much indebted to you on behalf of our board, uh, as we've already recognized you, will continue to recognize you. I just want to thank you sincerely for your commitment to education. Thank you, sir.
What?
Hi, my name is Chris Lang. I live at 502 Lincoln Avenue, and I saw you in December with the problem that we had. Uh, we have a business...
If I could just wrap this up, then we'll go to public comments on other items. This is just for public comments on this item right here.
Oh, okay.
All right. But, you know, I, I, first I'd just tell my colleagues and staff that I appreciate this. I, I definitely did not expect it, but I, I truly believe that what we do here today is because of all of, of the individuals that's before us and staff in terms of them embracing this, and it's my hope that this will continue on, you know, after me, there are things that I look out, I see Mayor Valiris and, and started the, um, honoring the students that had 4.0, and we continue to do that, and hopefully there's always opportunities to recognize our students, 'cause I, I believe that that's our future, you know? Um, so I'm, I'm definitely very appreciative. I appreciate Dr. Gregor's kind words. I, I always say that to individuals that talk to me, that I believe that he's doing a great job in this district. There was problems before he got here, and probably when he leave, hopefully that's for all, there'll still be things that we still need to do. It's never, uh, a thing where you can do everything that you need to do, because I believe all of us want every child to succeed. And until that happens, we still have work to do. So I just want to thank all of you for, for coming and being a part of, hey, we still have a lot of work to do, so I definitely appreciate that, so. I, I, what I do is, no, I want y'all to stick around there for a couple of seconds while I do this, because, uh, I, I told, um, and I'm going to the next item that we have, and I, I believe that's it, yeah, is to honor Pat Weber. And, um, we have something for Pat, and I told Pat she sneaked out of town on a, some people, you know, they, they think the mayor should be everywhere, and he should know everything, but I didn't know that they was having a, quote unquote, surprise, uh, retirement party for her until after it was over. But, you know, Pat has been someone that I believe helped to transform this community, you know? I look at, I say, 19 years, man, I remember when she came, it seemed like it was just yesterday, but I was talking to my wife, and she reminded me that she was on the selection committee to, uh, to bring Pat in. So I had to tell her that she made at least two good selections. I won't tell you what the second one was, but the first one, you know, that I look to honor tonight is with Pat, and Pat has, you know, I think, and I, I was thinking about all of the things that has happened in the public housing arena and in the Union Academy community, and how she's been a catalyst for a lot of the changes that has taken place, you know? Um, hard worker, you know, uh, Pat know how to go in and find the dollars, you know, to help to uplift the community. And I just wanted to say personally, Pat, that I really appreciate all that you, uh, have done and have started, you know, to, to do in terms of Tarpon as a whole and having housing for those that might not be as fortunate to have housing and, and to have quality housing. You know, sometime, and I've been around a little while, that sometime people think that, um, for the people we call less fortunate, they don't have to have quality. Anything is better than nothing, but Pat has always looked at trying to deal with quality housing for the people who needed it. So this here is a key to the city, it says Outstanding Service Award in appreciation to Pat, Patricia Weber, Executive Director, Tarpon Springs Housing Authority, for your 19 years of outstanding service and dedication to our community, 2016, the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. And I always say, people say, well, what, what will the key open? And I always tell them that it always opens all of the hearts of the people of Tarpon Springs, and you've already done that when you came to our fair city and contributed your time and effort to make Tarpon a better place, so I'd just like to give you this on behalf of all of the citizens and my colleagues, so. If you want to say something now, Pat, you know, you want to. We, we always have, I have to say, if you go to the mic, then they can hear your TV, hopefully.
I want to say that it was a great 19 years. I loved working in Tarpon and the people here, and that's why I was able to accomplish the things that I did, because of the people sitting here and the citizens and the people that I worked with. So, thank you for everything you did with me, okay? Thank you.
Any public comments on this item?
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I was on the board as the Commissioner Mayor when Pat came, and she came at a very difficult time for the city with the housing authority. She cleaned up a mess, she made the budget right, she got the money, she got the grants, she got the program going. My mother was a secretary down there for many years, and she said, "This lady is one of the finest ladies that we could have in the housing authority." Everybody loved Pat, gave her a hard time sometimes, but everybody loved her. She brought us up to a level in this community that could never have been done without her efforts. She's been talked about all over the state of Florida. I remember going up to Tallahassee, and they were talking about our housing program because of Pat Weber. She's done so much to elevate our community in the housing authority, it's gonna be hard to match her. We're gonna miss her, she's given us so much, and as one elected official at one time and a citizen of this community, Pat, thank you, and I wish you the best, the best of health, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you very much.
It's always hard to follow Anita. Um, Pat, congratulations, and I just wanted to wish you the best in whatever the future's bringing you. And I hope people know how hard it is to work day in and day out in the housing arena. Um, it's just, it's hard work, and to put together projects, to get new housing out of the ground, everything that you have to go through, and it's like the planets have to line up with funding and with entitlements and, and, you know, and public acceptance, and so it's, it's always tough. And, uh, the City of Tarpon is just absolutely better for the work that Pat's done, so, and I absolutely enjoyed working with you. Uh, the, the projects were fun. They were hard, but they were fun. Thanks, Pat.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Reed, and I work with the Pinellas County Community Development and Planning Division, and I just wanted to echo the other comments. Um, I also, Mayor Archie didn't know, wasn't able to make the surprise party, um, to recognize Pat, and on behalf of Pinellas County Government, we just wanted to say, Pat, we've had a wonderful, um, supportive, cooperative working relationship throughout all these years, and not only have you made Tarpon Springs a better place, you've made Pinellas County a better place. Thank you for your service.
If there are no other public comments, we'll take a, a brief, uh, two to three-minute break and let some of our educators, uh, do what they need to do. Robin said, you want to stay awhile? So we'll take a brief break. Take care of that.
I'm very proud. Thank you so much.
Stay here?
She's going on a beautiful road trip.
Wish you the best.
Robin.
Hi, Anita.
She's now, she's now the Executive Director of Tarpon Springs Housing Authority.
Very nice to meet you.
You'll be dealing with my sister, Dean Economist. I remember the first day she came here, first time she came to the commission meeting.
I remember the first time I met you, I went here often.
It was crazy, wasn't it?
Thank you so much. Reflections.
Hi, Renee. Nice to meet you.
And we were reviewing?
Okay, good. Okay, good.
Were your ears burning?
Somewhere. Let me see, we're, I'm switching bags, I may not, I apologize. Oh, I don't have it. I'm sorry. I will, I will find you, I will find you. I, I transferred my bag so that it wouldn't be so heavy.
I like your bag, have it to Roger's.
Thank you.
seven oh three, and we'll go to, uh, public comments on any item that would not be discussed this evening?
Uh, Anita, again, I want to wish our city manager a happy birthday. I'd like to know how old he is, if he's old enough to go out on his own, if he's, has a curfew, and I think we all need to know that, but happy birthday, Mark, and may you have many, many more.
Thank you.
I want to apologize to the city of Tarpon Springs. The negativity in this year's election, we have never had before, and it's put a cloud on all previous mayors and commissioners in the city of Tarpon Springs, and we don't deserve that. We are good, law-abiding people, we worked hard for our community, we walked the line, and if something fifteen years ago was wrong, it would have been rectified then. So, to the mayor and the commissioners of today, you're doing an excellent job, I want to congratulate you. None of us who have been previous elected officials have ever done something to shame or disgrace the city of Tarpon Springs. We are a city of friendship, love, and family. There is no separate community in Tarpon Springs, we are one community and one big family, as I told our mayor, he is my clemian cousin, and he knows it. But anyway, I'm sorry this has happened, and I hope it doesn't continue, we need to move forward in a positive attitude and make Tarpon Springs shine. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Lang, I live at five oh two Lincoln Avenue, and I'm here on the behalf of some of my neighbors who are here, and some neighbors that couldn't make it because of work. Um, I was here in December, and I let you know about a problem that we are having on our street. We have what is considered a neighborhood business put into the middle of residential zoning. Unfortunately, the officers have been handling the drug problem, and there's still the drug problem going on. Every person that goes by that snack shop, which they consider themselves the hood, beeps the horn. You cannot talk on the phone, you can't read your paper on your own porch, the racial slurs, which I'm not gonna repeat, and the profanity and fighting is out of control. Uh, they're smoking drugs on the side, and the neighbors will not let their children out into their yards. There's no parking, zero parking for this, so whoever thought that a snack shop in the middle of a residential neighborhood was a good idea, um, doesn't live there. We need some help as a neighborhood and the neighbors so that the children can go back in our yards, we can sit on our patios and not have to listen to everybody swearing and spitting on our sidewalks. The garbage is out of control, and the traffic is out of control. My mailman has complained to me because he can't get through. Um, I'm hoping that with this, I have made some stuff for you to look at, that you can get together with the neighborhood and help us out, because this is an antiquated building, it's an antiquated zoning, and I'm quite sure none of you would like a snack shop with people cursing and racial slurs while you have visitors on your patio. This is a nuisance business, and when they come to do the dumpster, it's at five forty-five in the morning. A commercial vehicle comes in, picks this commercial dumpster up, and wakes the neighborhood up. It's attracting rats to our neighborhood, and we need some help, so we're turning to you for some help. There's only so much the officers can do. This is a nuisance property in the middle of a residential area, so I'm hoping you can help us. I have video that I'm gonna send to you, my phone died, and pictures, so you can see what we're dealing with, which will have my email, and you can get ahold of me and all my neighbors who are having this problem, um, if you need to get back to me. Also, we have a renter that's right next door, we can't keep a renter in there. We have wonderful rental neighbors, and they leave because they can't, their children can't go in the yard, and they hear racial slurs and swearing and fights. They park on their lawn and dig up their lawns, so I know when their lease is up, they're gonna move, and then we're gonna get new neighbors and new neighbors, because no one can stand to live there except for the people who own and have to deal with it. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider getting with all of us in the neighborhood who are concerned about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the police department is trying to address whatever problems they have there, so it's just a continuous effort, so.
Frank DiDonato, seven twenty, Woodmont, I had not planned to speak, but I have visited this very neighborhood that this young lady was just talking to you about, and, uh, this is an area where, over the years, Ms. Pat Weber, sorry she's gone, but she was one of the ones that helped to bring some of the new development and, and improved housing to the area. Um, it, it, it doesn't seem to be a fit, and I believe it to be a nuisance, and this young lady's not the only one that's complained to me about it, and I just thought that I would bring it forth to you, and please ask that you look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Raj Salu, nine six seven Bay Shore Drive. Uh, I'm talking on the, uh, as we're entering the, the end of the candidate time here in Tarpon for the elections, uh, and I've had occasion, because I'm, uh, working with the, the hospital on its, uh, number two proposition, listened to a number of the candidates. Uh, I'm talking to you now as the Chairman of your Budget Advisory Committee. Uh, as I've listened to the candidates speak at the forums, there's an incredible amount of disinformation that they're spreading about how we're running our city, what our budgets are, and how they're handled, and at our last Budget Advisory Committee meeting, uh, two or three of the committee members were really upset that we spent the time doing the work and working with you to get, uh, I think, excellent budgets approved, that I wanted to find some forum by which we could get back and at least explain what the facts are. Uh, the issue that was raised was that one, uh, I think in one of the forums, they all agreed, we have fluffy budgets. Well, you guys know we don't, and certainly the city manager knows we don't have fluffy budgets, uh, and a fair amount on how much we're using up of our unassigned fund balance. And just as a basis of facts, and if people would listen to the video, uh, when we ended two thousand and eight as a fiscal year, we had eight million, seven hundred thousand dollars of money in the budget, or in the unassigned funds, as our great fund for, uh, special needs, should there be hurricanes, et cetera. At the end of two thousand and fourteen, we had eight million, eight hundred thousand dollars. At the end of twenty fifteen, eight million, eight hundred thousand dollars, and the forecast done in December of this last year for twenty sixteen is eight million, eight hundred thousand dollars. There has been no big drawdown. The only thing that has happened is there were extra revenues before the real low values hit, and those got used up as the value came down and is coming back up again, but in fact, we're right where we were. So as the candidates talk about lack of funds, eh, they're not, that's not a fair issue, and the city has done a wonderful job of preparing us for that problem back in oh nine and ten. So I just want to get the record straight that that isn't a major problem. And secondly, the, uh, the claims, uh, that have been made on, uh, two thousand and one, two or three, on the letter that's coming out, that Chris has made comments about Frank's management as the mayor, actually, I understand, the issue is one that they didn't meet and approve a request to purchase property. Unfortunately, there was no request to purchase property. There's no record that a request was made, uh, there's no phone records, there's no request that was even made that someone wanted to buy the property. So I don't see where the, uh, the issue arises. Uh, we're certainly not doing ourselves any favor. We start to look an awful lot like some of the people in today's national politics. Uh, appreciate your time, and one of the things I would ask in the next round of, uh, of candidates is a little bit of education for the candidates, and also for the public, as to really, how is the city doing? Uh, it's, there's not very many people sitting in the audience to listen to what the budget is and what the numbers are, and it's pretty easy to pick up any numbers you want without having some mechanism, uh, in the city to get the right numbers back out. Maybe some sort of a forum, or at least have people like myself come forward and talk about them as the, as the races carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd just say, if someone else has approached the podium, is that, you know, I've heard a lot of the negative about what's happening for us from a financial perspective, I'd just say that, you know, any citizen that believe that the city is not on good financial standards, all they need to do is, is look at the audit reports that has come out continuously in terms of where we at, what type of budget, you know, we have, uh, twice as much money as we are even quote-unquote legally required to have, so to say that funds are depleted is, you know, uh, we're in such a dire shape is definitely, uh, not a truthful statement, so. Any other public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Colianna, Circle Drive, Tarpon Springs. I was hoping I wouldn't have to come up here tonight, that we wouldn't get into the election portion of it, but however, it seems to be, uh, free publicity. I came tonight to clarify a misconception created by one of the candidates, Mr. DiDonato. This race has always been about Chris versus Frank. It's never been about the committees saying things about each other as they've indicated, When Frank came up here and spoke to you on February sixteenth, rather upstairs, he came to this board and provided some disingenuous information regarding what was going on, and, and said that you were insulted by all of this and all of that, and we should have never, the committee should have never said anything about those members that helped Frank, they were his, most of these people are his commissioners at the time, but they're also on his committee, and that's great. No one on Chris's committee ever said that these people ever did anything wrong. The error occurred when they decided to walk up to you and say, I remember we discussed this, I remember we discussed this. Three of the members, plus one extra, went through this grand scheme to support Frank, and I understand they want to support Frank because he's their candidate. However, the records don't indicate, and I'm responsible on Chris's campaign, to verify those records. I asked for the Freedom of Information Act, I got the paperwork, and I can sit here and tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt, there was never a public meeting, there was never a work session, there was never a regular session that occurred prior to the letter being sent. That's how the sunshine that everybody got excited about was generated. We didn't generate it, we didn't come up here and say, oh, yeah, I was at the meeting, I heard it. They committed themselves to that, okay? They generated that publicity, they generated the feedback from it. Mayor Archie, sir, I, I truly respect your position, and I'll tell you, as a committee member on Chris's team, we would never have brought up your name as being a commissioner on Frank's team when he was the mayor. We would never have done that to the city of Tarpon Springs, and a lot of things have happened that we've bitten our lips on to keep from embarrassing the city. You, you never admitted in your interview with the Tampa Bay Times that you actually remembered the meeting. You never said that. Nobody ever accused you of a sunshine law violation. You were not accused of that, especially by us. That's all of the hyperbole everybody likes to do, to get this intense thing going about Chris versus Frank and who's gonna win, you know? We're gonna find that out in two weeks, but in the meantime, I think we need to bring some truth to what's going on here. I'll sit here and tell you, and I can assure you, I have the paperwork. What I'm telling you tonight about the Freedom of Information Act is the absolute truth. I don't know why Frank did what he did, I really don't understand why he doesn't have the courage to say...
a lot of the negative about what's happening for us from a financial perspective. I'd just say that, you know, any citizen that believes that the city is not on good financial standards, all they need to do is look at the audit reports that has come out continuously in terms of where we at, what type of budget. You know, we have twice as much money as we are even quote-unquote legally required to have, so to say that funds are depleted is, you know, we're in such a dire shape is definitely not a truthful statement, so. Any other public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Cooley, on Circle Drive, Tarpon Springs. I was hoping I wouldn't have to come up here tonight, that we wouldn't get into the election portion of it, but however, it seems to be free publicity. I came tonight to clarify a misconception created by one of the candidates, Mr. DiDonato. This race has always been about Chris versus Frank. It's never been about the committees saying things about each other as they've indicated, When Frank came up here and spoke to you on February 16th, rather upstairs, he came to this board and provided some disingenuous information regarding what was going on, and said that you were insulted by all of this and all of that, and we should have never, the committee should have never said anything about those members that helped Frank, they were his, most of these people are his commissioners at the time, but they're also on his committee, and that's great. No one on Chris's committee ever said that these people ever did anything wrong. The error occurred when they decided to walk up to you and say, "I remember we discussed this. I remember we discussed this." Three of the members, plus one extra, went through this grand scheme to support Frank, and I understand they want to support Frank because he's their candidate. However, the records don't indicate, and I'm responsible on Chris's campaign, to verify those records. I asked for the Freedom of Information Act, I got the paperwork, and I can sit here and tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt, there was never a public meeting, there was never a work session, there was never a regular session that occurred prior to the letter being sent. That's how the sunshine that everybody got excited about was generated. We didn't generate it. We didn't come up here and say, "Oh yeah, I was at the meeting, I heard it." They committed themselves to that, okay? They generated that publicity, they generated the feedback from it. Mayor Archie, sir, I truly respect your position, and I'll tell you, as a committee member on Chris's team, we would never have brought up your name as being a commissioner on Frank's team when he was the mayor. We would never have done that to the city of Tarpon Springs, and a lot of things have happened that we've bitten our lips on to keep from embarrassing the city. You never admitted in your interview with the Tampa Bay Times that you actually remembered the meeting. You never said that. Nobody ever accused you of a sunshine law violation. You were not accused of that, especially by us. That's all of the hyperbole everybody likes to do to get this intense thing going about Chris versus Frank and who's going to win. You know, we're going to find that out in two weeks, but in the meantime, I think we need to bring some truth to what's going on here. I'll sit here and tell you, and I can assure you, I have the paperwork. What I'm telling you tonight about the Freedom of Information Act is the absolute truth. I don't know why Frank did what he did. I really don't understand why he doesn't have the courage to say, "Hey, I made a mistake, it shouldn't have happened." That's not, that's not our concern. We've tried to run, and we will continue to run, a good, clean campaign, and I was happy to hear Mrs. Protas say that tonight.
If I might just say, you know, the bell is ringing, if you could just wrap it up.
I have two people, one of them my brother, and one is Chris Roboski, who, I'm almost through, I promise I won't take another four minutes, if that's okay.
Yeah, well, I tell you, as I sit here, one thing that I think that the future commission needs to do is have some clarification about how we give up time, and that, you know, we start in the middle, that I've got this to go, and somebody else gave me time, I just think that that needs to be clarified at some point in time, so we don't entertain this. But if you wrap it up, I still would appreciate it.
I would definitely wrap it up, and I appreciate your patience. There wasn't any information in the Freedom of Information Act that indicated there ever was a meeting. I totally believe what I received, I totally believed what I was told, had no other reason for lack of evidence that anything else occurred. It's important to remember that, for those of us who were paying attention back in those times, that after Frank got out of office, he waited the proper time and ran for commission. He was overwhelmingly defeated, and my memory serves me pretty correctly, it was because the city was very upset about this piece of property. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm the happiest person in the world to tell you that I'll be glad when this is over in two weeks, because there are too many sides to stories, you know? There's always our side and your side, and then there's the real side. And unfortunately, because of all the accusations, one of the members of our committee has written a letter to the Attorney General in hopes that she will determine what the real truth is. We're going to move forward positively, we've moved forward all along positively, we have not made any effort whatsoever to embarrass anybody. I'm here tonight strictly to state the facts, and I do have those facts, and, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time, your extra time, and thanks for the board's patience.
I will not get into a he-said, he-said thing with anybody. I can merely tell you that if you ask former Commissioner Cooley honest that if he ever met one-on-one with the city manager about educating him on whatever was going to happen, the answer would be yes. And I think if I went down the line and started with Ray, and asked each one of you, had you spent any time alone with the city manager discussing an item? And I would venture to say that every one of you have. Now, they're making a lot out of nothing. I was doing my job, I was representing our city, and it was just merely an opinion. As stated here earlier today, there never was an offer from the county. The city manager at the time thought there was, and felt that because we had a week or so before the next meeting, that she needed to act, so she did indeed talk to us, and we agreed that that was still our policy, and we simply stated our policy. That's all that was. The county still could have come forward and made an offer to buy that property, they did it a couple of years prior to that, when they bought property off of Carlton Avenue. They bought it, it's still preserved, it's not a park, but it's still there. So I categorically deny everything that was just said. There were some accusations made, in fact, there was an ad that accused five people of a sunshine law violation. And you can spread that any way you want, but that's what it said. I merely did my job, and at the time, it was the right thing to do. Today, that situation, as I've said before, is different, and I've explained that in forums, and I won't go through it again, but apologize to you, if you want an apology, I'll apologize to you tonight for you even having to listen to this crap. Never should have been brought up, it was an attempt to sling as much mud up on the wall to see how much can stick. I did my job, I'm proud of what I did, and I'm proud of the people I served with. Thank you.
Thank you for Roger, for bringing the idea of needing facts for people to make decisions. Frank, I've been to the forums, I honestly believe you love Tarpon, and it's in your heart, but I want to talk facts. Frank mentioned common practice. A lot of times, commissioners, mayors, they go to city manager meetings, mayor meetings, they talk and stuff, and as he had said at a forum before, there was never any formal proposal, nothing that was found as a letter or something coming to the city, it was probably something discussed in a conversation, and as he mentions now, is brought to the city manager, and then talked to each individual commissioner. Well, this is a common practice of boards, not to circumvent the sunshine law, but somehow to get a feel for an issue other than in a public forum. We did it with the Walmart. When I first came on board, each and every one of us commissions had a meeting with Walmart. I even have a tape recording of it. So it happens. But I want to talk about facts. Facts. In the article, it says, "DiDonato and the rest of the commission felt another park was the wrong way to use prime piece of commercial property to express that opinion. DiDonato drafted a letter to the county. DiDonato says he has full support of the commission to send the letter." And then later in the article, it's stated by Mayor Archie, "This was just somebody in a position showing true leadership by taking charge of the situation he had no support, he knew he had support on." Well, the title of the article is "Discreditous Alhuses." Well, it should have been "Who Discrediting Who?" One, last week, I checked with the city clerk, I says, you know, did Chris and them really check? Did you find anything? No. I even checked again today. Listen, before I get up and open my mouth, I want to see, was there any meeting or anything discussed about that property or a letter? No. So I'm not here to say there was any sunshine law violation, I'm not in a position to state that, but I'm here to state that the statements by Mr. DiDonato and the mayor basically confirm what Chris has said, and even, Mr. DiDonato came up and said there's nothing on record. So when the reporter writes, "Despite these serious allegations, he has no, Mr. Alhuses no intention to file a complaint, nor did he offer any proof of the allegation." Well, if there was never any meeting discussing it, there is no proof, other than there is no meeting or discussion of it. Now, as Mr. Cooley honest mentioned, there's other issues that have occurred in the past that involve the previous mayor and the previous mayor, some of the board members, and that's Lake Erie College of Medicine. And if you want to look back, Lake Erie College of Medicine, and look at Savannah Cove, and if you want any idea about skullduggery and issues of how, you know, during this campaign, people have talked about wanting to provide jobs and development. Later, there's going to be a site plan review for the Mears Crossing, where it's wiping out, basically, the medical office, the hospitals looking to the city to get money from, I mean, the hospital's looking to get money for the city to do an ER. Yet, at one point in time, we had Lake Erie College of Medicine come to the city and request the opportunity to build a medical college on the property that Savannah Cove is on now. But there are reasons why that never happened. Reasons being that the group that came forward were in a hurry to get the referendum for...
If you can kind of wrap it up to that, Mr. Lakkas.
Well, basically, the point is, we've had opportunities in the past where we could have really helped the city of Tarpon Springs economically. That Mears Crossing would be full and done now if the Lake Erie College of Medicine had been built here, and if you have any doubts, look up Lake Erie College of Medicine, Bradenton, that's where they went. They had a, have a medical school, they've now since built a dental school, they've built a pharmacy school, all the doctors, all the staff would have filled up plenty of all this development, not only the place behind the Ace Hardware, but the development, Calypso K on, on Mears, and there would have been plenty of room for people to move in, two, the apartments that would have built at this Mears Crossing, plus, they would have needed those offices for the doctors that would have been there practicing and working at Lake Erie College of Medicine. Now, there was two reasons why that didn't occur. They needed to have an election by a certain time because Commissioner Beverly Belleris resigned, and in order to run for mayor, there had to be an election, and those people offered to pay for the election, and there was a time constraint where they did not allow Lake Erie College of Medicine to come in and complete their presentation to the board. If that had occurred, you would see a medical school there, you would have seen plenty of apartments and houses built.
Mr. Lakkas, let's finish there.
Thank you.
Any more public comments?
The main reason that college didn't come in is the doctor in St. Pete died, and funding was not available. We were ready to go, and I was on the board, sir, I was on the board. They, they lost their funding, so let's be true about what's happened.
You know, we'll close public comments, and I just say this, is that, you know, I've served, had the pledge of serving the city of Tarpon for a very, very long time, and some people might say too long, but I've never had it where I've been on a board where we have this type of discussion about an election. And I say this, is that, you know, when you throw my name in there, then you say that I shouldn't say anything, you make innuendos that certain people have violated the sunshine law, and I'm on the committee, on the commission, and then you choose, say that I shouldn't say anything, I tell you, that's absurd. And I'll tell you what I told the times. I told them that it's absurd for somebody to bring up something like this. So they didn't put everything I said in there, and I said that people would have to be a little off to think that you tell the county, you write, and you tell them what to do, and then they do what you say. If that was the case, then you can look for public records if you want to talk about facts. When they wanted to go out to Howard Park and change the fees out there, the whole commission said no, the citizens said no, we said resolution, we said letter, we said no. The county did what they wanted to do, and if they wanted to buy the property, they would have bought the property. So yes, I said something, because I did feel like it was innuendos being thrown out that I might have been a part of a violation of the sunshine law. And I said to them this too, is that when I was on the board, and that property wasn't even talked about for as Walmart, Walmart wasn't even in existence, and it was ABR, and everybody in the city was trying to do whatever they could to get ABR and Ceridian out there, there's going to be jobs and all the rest of that. That's when the zoning and stuff got changed, and I was on the board then, so I was supportive of commercial out there then. Why? I had changed, and I wanted to have a park, I said then, I still say, we have plenty of parks all around us. When we don't do things for as commercial development and things that's going to increase our tax base, then the residents are the only other source that we have for tax base. So I wasn't for a park then, and I tell you, I wasn't for a park now, and I was the one that voted for Walmart, and I ran for election right after that, and y'all talk about what the citizens wanted, they voted me in then, even though I voted to have Walmart there. So I don't like all this stuff coming up before us, posturing and this about the election and who on this side, that side. I haven't been on anybody's side, but I do hate it when people write things, they don't, if you want to call out this commissioner or that commissioner, call them by name, don't say the commission, because I was a part of the commission. So if there was a sunshine law violation, that means I violated it. And yes, it upsets me, you know, to get up, and then some people want to get up and go back thirty-some years, and this is what happened, like they got some type of ability to see what would have happened. Who knows what would have happened with that property out there? We know nothing did happen, and, you know, maybe it's good in a sense, because I could tell you, I don't like it when people take more time than they need to, and I don't want to have to have the chief to remove somebody, because you want to be disrespectful. You have four minutes, say whatever you want in four minutes, and then, hey, let it, let it alone. So hey, all of us would be glad when the election is over, and those that don't like what I say, they'll be especially glad, you know? So with that, we'll go to the next item we have, and that's the proclamation. And Jay, you know, it's bad we have to have you come up for purchasing. But we do have a proclamation, because purchasing is important, and this says, "Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating and working relationship with suppliers and other departments within the organization, and whereas public procurement professionals in the city of Tarpon Springs, government, and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic condition in the United States, with their cumulative purchasing power running into billions of dollars, whereas the procurement services division in the city of Tarpon Springs is committed to provide high caliber strategic logistical and operational support to all departments within the city of Tarpon Springs, whereas the procurement services division in the city of Tarpon Springs recognizes, supports, and practices public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service transparency, established by the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession, and whereas NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as purchasing month to further expand the awareness of procurement professionals' role to government officials, to general public, business, and corporate leaders. Now, therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as procurement month in the city of Tarpon Springs, and urge all citizens to join in, city commission to recognize the role of procurement and materials management, and materials management profession within business industry and government." Mr. Jackus. The next item is definitely a great item, and we'll go to the chief in terms of reaccreditation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Boarder Commissioner, City Manager. It's an honor to stand here and present this to you. Department was reaccredited on January, correction, February 24th, 2016. This is our first, what they call reaccreditation. Back in 2011, we started the arduous process of looking at getting ourselves accredited. It took almost two years to get our first accreditation, and this stuff is... It took almost two years to get our first accreditation, and this stuff is real. We wouldn't have it any other way. You have to follow all the best practices. You basically turn your department upside down. You look at everything you do to follow best practices. And one of the best ways as chief, yeah, it starts with the chief, but one of the best ways really is to decentralize command and control and empower your people on the line level, the sergeants and the officers, because that's where the rubber hits the road. And when you start changing your culture and you allow that to happen, accreditation becomes a lot easier. Most of the stuff happens at that level, and when you have that buy-in, it's much easier. You also need an awesome accreditation manager, and what I'm going to do is have Sergeant Roggerio kind of go through his presentation with you and explain the process, but he's been truly awesome, the officers, the sergeants, both the majors, everyone had buy-in into this process, and the department is much better for it, and our delivery of service to the community is much better for it. So with that said, I'm going to have Sergeant Roggerio come up here and go through his PowerPoint presentation for you, and we'll address any questions that you have. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. The accreditation process started in the state of Florida back in 1993. The Florida Sheriff's Association, Florida Police Chiefs Association got together and decided they need to come up with an accreditation process for all law enforcement agencies to enter if they voluntarily wanted to. They did not make it mandatory. The commission is made up of basically sheriffs, judges, police chiefs, and city managers from around the state that are selected and elected to the commission. The commission meets every quarter to decide if there's any standards that need to be updated or reviewed, or the best trends or the best practices out there that need to be kept updated. So as we break it down, is what does accreditation actually mean? Accreditation programs have known- been known as the means of maintaining the highest standards of professionalism, and it's a certification process by an individual reviewing authority providing the entity with- has met specific requirements to prescribe standards. It might sound familiar because mostly hospitals and colleges are the ones that started the accreditation. They're required to have it to be in business. Law enforcement is 100% voluntary. So as we start going through law enforcement voluntary programs, there's over 400 agencies right now in the state of Florida, and only about 150 of us are actually certified as accredited agencies. Some agencies actually get their accreditation, and then they lose it because they failed to keep up the standards that they have. So it's pretty hard for them to go out there and rip the stickers off their cars and turn everything back in, and it's very demeaning to those agencies, but it happens. It happens more than it should actually. So why is this important to us as a commission, as a community, as a police department? There's a lot of things that happen. They require us to have written policies and keep them up to date as far as we possibly can. They also require us to work within those specific guidelines, and they give us the symbol of excellence. Like I said before, not everybody can obtain this. There's agencies that have tried to do it out there, and they just couldn't do it. So it requires us to keep our level of training and our excellence with our officers up there so they're safe. Why it's important for officers? There's a lot of different things out there that officers have at our agencies that some officers don't. The number one thing that pops out is body armor. Nowadays, when people are taking pop shots at police officers for no reason and killing them, there's actually law enforcement agencies out there that put officers on the street without body armor. Accreditation requires our agency to issue all of our officers body armor that it's acceptable. There's also other things such as our valuations, are fair, firm, and consistent because our accreditation process requires that, and our officers also have grievance processes. So it makes it for a better atmosphere for our officers to actually work here compared to other things. So it helps us with recruiting and retaining our officers rather than being a training ground like in the past and having them go to other agencies after we train them and make them well-rounded officers. Moves on to the primary areas of concern for the commission when they actually make up their standards. Their number one thing is officer safety. Are we outfitting our officers and giving them the equipment that's required for them to be safe on the street? And are we training them the proper way so they can actually do their job in a safe manner? And then it goes to the constitutional rights of our citizens that we're coming in contact with to make sure we're not violating their rights and make sure it's not the Wild, Wild West Police Department, we're doing things the way we're prescribed to do them, and by the way, the state of Florida tells us we should be doing them with our best practices. And then it makes sure that we actually adhere to our policies. A lot of agencies have policies out there that are just in writing, but they don't actually follow them. So when our accreditation people come in, they check to make sure we're actually following the policies that we have in writing, and then make sure our facilities is secure so we don't have people escaping from our holding cells, and also to make sure we're honest. And that's a big thing there is honesty with our officers. As we move on, there's- we have- I'm sorry, I skipped one. There's approximately 260 standards right now that we have to comply with to receive accreditation. Of those 260, 160 of them are mandatory. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. You either do them, or you're not going to be accredited. Of the other 100, we have an 80% of them that we have to comply with. We at the Tarpon Springs Police Department, we comply with all 100% of them. There's four of them that we actually haven't been able to show that we're in compliance with, but there are training issues that we train with other agencies, so we don't have proof of them, but technically, we're still in compliance with all of the standards that we're required to do. And when we just took our last assessment, our assessments usually run between Thursday- Tuesday and Thursday, and they have outside individuals come in from the commission. They're usually accreditation specialists or law enforcement officers that are involved in accreditation from other agencies. They come in and they have total access. We give them the keys to the building, say, look anywhere as you want, any drawer, any report, talk to any officer, ride along with our officers. They do all that stuff. They usually work about 18 hours a day while they're here to make sure they get a chance to go through all that, and then they come up with a report. And the biggest things that they look for is our files are kept in order, that they talk to our officers, say, hey, you know, you have a pursuit policy, but do you know what it is? Because if involved in a pursuit, you can't sit there and say, well, hold on a second, let me look it up in a book. So our officers are required to know exactly what our pursuit policies are and all of our high liability areas. And they actually test them and question them about them, and they have to pass those tests, otherwise we wouldn't become accredited. Then they also interview other representative departments to make sure they're getting trained the proper way, and then they inspect our facilities, make sure our holding cells are okay. We can't put somebody in our holding cell and then violate their constitutional rights by not giving them anything to drink or not having a light inside the holding cell. So they check all that facility for us too, to make sure we're up to snuff and we're not violating anybody's rights. And then they also ask all the civilian members other questions about their training they receive, so we can't just hire somebody today and put them in the job tomorrow and say, here you go, you're on your own. We have to actually have training programs for each and every position within our department, whether it's sworn or non-s sworn. So the first time we went through our assessment, as the chief said, was back in December 12th to the 14th in 2012. We passed that pretty good. We had no issues with it. We went in front of the commission in February of 2013, received our first accreditation award, and then the second assessment team came back in December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of 2015, and they passed us with flying colors. They had nothing but good things to say about our agency, and we just went in front of the commission last Wednesday, February 24th, and received our first accreditation award. And although our onsite inspections are one of the most important things in our accreditation process, our accreditation process is a daily thing. It's not just a one every three years we get inspected, because our- the Commission for Florida Accreditation come here tomorrow and say, hey, you know what? We read a newspaper article about something you guys did, and we didn't like it, we want to inspect your everything. And we have to open up the door and say, go right ahead, it's all yours. So they can come anytime, but the way we do things, we don't do it every three years. We do it as a daily lifestyle, and it's been very easy to work that way. And when our guys come, the way we do business on Monday when they're not there is the same way we do business on Tuesday when they're there. So we don't have to change anything, we don't have to finagle anything. Everything's real, like the chief said, and we do it as a typical lifestyle, and we're committed to following that. This is our award that we received over there, and I'd like to personally thank Commissioner Banther for coming all the way over there. He's been involved in this process with us from when he was back in the Budget Advisory Committee in our first assessment, and it really means a lot to us. I know everybody else is very busy. The city manager took time in his busy schedule to come over there and receive these awards with us, but I'd like to thank everybody for giving me this opportunity to come to you and kind of explain to you what we actually go through, because it is a big daunting process that we're all proud of at the police department. So thank you, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
First, I don't have any questions because I know that the accreditation process is a arduous one, but I think it shows something about what type of agency that we have, that we would undergo, that there are a lot of other agencies that don't want to do it because they know what all it takes to be accredited. So first, you know, it's a credit to the chief that we have, because I always believe that, you know, it starts with leadership, but under the chief is all of the other men and women that are performing on a day-to-day basis, and I know that we just went through accreditation process for our organization. I know there was nothing as extensive as what you're doing, but it's about processes and about doing those processes each and every day to make you a better agency. So I just want to thank you first for leading it up, but I thank the chief and all of the men and women who carry out those tasks every day that we can have a great city and a safe city, and it's because of y'all efforts. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to tell you just how grateful I am for the work that y'all do as a PD in protecting and serving our community. Certainly, it's a grueling task to go through the accreditation process. I believe it was made a recommendation from the Budget Advisory Committee when I was the chairman, and initially, as the chairman, I didn't really agree that we should make a recommendation, because I didn't think it was in our purview for the PD to have to go through the accreditation process. You know, we're there to discuss the budget. But in hindsight, I'm thankful that, you know, I was a part of that, and y'all did go through the accreditation process, because I think it speaks volumes to our PD and the work that you do. And I just want to tell you how proud I am, and especially of the chief, of you and the work that you do and your leadership at the PD and the direction that you've taken it since I've been involved in this community on the board and also the Budget Advisory Committee. I'm appreciative and thankful and proud of what you do with forfeiture funds and how you spend those monies wisely to enhance our PD. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
I just want to say congratulations and thank you, chief, for your leadership as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I know you have something to say.
Thank you. No, I also just wanted to congratulate the police department. I think the fact that this is a voluntary program and our police department chose to move forward and go for accreditation really just speaks volumes about the quality of a police department that we have here in Tarpon Springs. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Balthazar?
Thank you, yes. I was happy to be there. I was there when I was running for office and on the non- that whole committee when y'all got the first one. I was glad to see you all here get renewed. And I was told from y'all that it's harder to get renewed sometimes than it is to get your first accreditation. So I was proud of that, and I think in light of how the extra scrutiny that, you know, officers are under in this environment, this helps us greatly as a community. And also, we've heard some noise in this election about the county coming in, the sheriff, they should put to rest any of that whatsoever. We have an A-plus department, and keeping that- keeping that here in Tarpon Springs is crucial, and they have shown that they're one of the best in the states. So we thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
Last time, I'm going home after this. I'm not running for any office, but I want to say, when I was on the board, we passed orders that it would have to go to referendum to go to the county for the simple reason, number one, we're too far north to have the county up here for fire department or police department. Secondly, our departments are so outstanding, they overrun the county in excellence. We need to be proud of the men in these departments for what they've done for the city of Tarpon Springs and given us the type of community that we have. The only thing is, I wish you would catch who's knocking my mailbox down, and-
We have a standard for that.
Okay, get him, and I'll bring you some donuts, or I'll bake cookies for you. And the second thing is, at Easter time, please don't bring the helicopter and the dogs to a religious service. It's not polite. But really, you're outstanding, both departments. I congratulate you. I think there's someone up in heaven that was helping our police department. We shine, and that is number one. I hear from citizens in Tarpon that our police and fire department is outstanding, and I don't understand how the fire department stays fit because I always see them at Publix. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Thank you again. We definitely appreciate all of your hard work and efforts in coming to inform us about it. Thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like to pull more information? CNN Chair would entertain a motion.
For approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. The next item is special consent item number 12, award file number 160074, Dyce C. Dyce M. Banking Services in the city of St. Petersburg, RFP number 7846.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Department. The city's current banking services contract expires April 30, 2016. In the past, we have piggybacked off the city of St. Pete. They have been with the Bank of America. Bank of- city of St. Pete has now gone with Chase Bank, and we try to decide whether, you know, to piggyback off, which is really the best way for the city. We find we get our most economical rates by piggybacking off the other banks, the larger banks. We've got a rate back from Bank of America. They came back with a proposal, and we've got the piggyback rate from the city of St. Petersburg. We compared those, we've gone through the analysis, we went before the Budget Advisory Committee, and the proposal by the Bank of America was basically we- about $17,000 more annually than what we are currently paying, and that's what the bank services charges. And then there's also an earnings credit rate of .25 basis points that Bank of America was proposing. Chase Bank with the city of St. Petersburg where they're piggybacking off of, came back and, like I said, would basically would stay at our current rates and saving about $17,000 a year versus the Bank of America proposal. Chase Bank has also come back and said they would pay us .35 basis points. So annually, the net positive effect of if we changed to Chase Bank would be a $17,000 savings on our bank services charges and about $8,000 more in interest earnings on our checking account annually. So the net effect is like $25,000 to the plus by going with Chase Bank. And so that's why we're proposing that we go with Chase Bank by piggybacking off the city of St. Petersburg.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Herring? If not, Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Does that suck?
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is item number 13, request to sell administrative fine on lien, 970 Sunrise Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. You've received my report regarding this property. Property is located at 970 Sunrise Drive in Tarpon Springs. This concerns code violations dating back to November 2010. Balance of my report is included within your packet. Based on the facts and circumstance of this case, I'm recommending reduction of the fine to $3,575 inclusive of the city's administrative costs of $575. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The only one that I really have is that I know there's a letter in here from the Mr. Stacy that's talking in terms of his ability to pay, and he states that, you know, $650 is a hardship for him to try to do that, and this is now $3,000 and something. I would ask if we would look at, because this is another one of these individuals that the parent basically passed, and they're the one that created the lien, and now what we're doing is our fees are about $575, which is twice what he's asked that it should be, and we're tacking on another $3,000 to that, that we just look at trying to recoup what we have that's out there and not put an additional hardship on this individual. I know, we looked at it during Christmas time, I know.
So you'd like to- you'd like to see just the city's cost of $575, Mayor?
Yeah, I think that that would be reasonable, that we recoup ours and not look at, because it- and that's two times as much as what he said that he-
Move to settle for $575?
Second.
Second.
Oh, that's right. We're in one of these separate sessions. Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner T. R. Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. The other one, I just declare that, you know, I have a conflict with this one. The individual that's applying is my cousin. The only thing I say, I don't know whether I need to pass the gavel, is that it talks about Reginald Woods being the son, and he's actually the brother of the deceased, and it's the son now that's asking that we reduce it. So, do I have to pass the gavel? Or how?
You're not required to, Mayor, but it's probably a safe procedure at this juncture. And just for clarity of the Commission, when you have a conflict of interest, you are permitted to participate, though this office has always advised against that. So, the mayor's participation in that juncture would be, in that circumstance, would be limited to running the hearing, if you will. He still couldn't vote. Out of an abundance of caution, I think it's prudent to pass the gavel. Nevertheless, you've gotten my report on this property as well. It's 421 South Distant Avenue. The mayor clarified the relationships issue, and I thank him for that. The original fine lien is $21,292.17, dating back to July 30 of 2008, and you are in possession of my office's recommendation to settle. There's also a small utility lien included in here, so I am recommending the total amount due of $9.55.89, which is inclusive of $575 in administrative costs to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, we've talked about these before. The utility lien is not negotiable. It's just part of the, part of my report because it does attach to the property.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Banther?
I would just motion to settle for the 300 plus the utility lien, so a total of
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner T. R. Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes. I guess with that, I can pass it back.
Sir?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Um, let's see. Next, we go to ordinance and resolution, item number 15, ordinance 2016-01, application 15-109, Mears Town Center Special Area Plan Amendment. Second read.
Ordinance 2016-01, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending ordinances 2008-18 and 2008-19 by amending the Mears Crossing Town Center Special Area Plan at 15-109, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That's the second reading of ordinance 2016-01 by title only. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on February 19, 2016.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano. We've worked with your staff to process this request for amendment of the special area plan. I won't go back through all of the background information that we reviewed at the first reading. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the changes to the special area plan and the process involved with it, if you would like. What I would bring to your attention is the recommendation of staff and the Planning and Zoning Board that the amendment to the special area plan be approved, subject to four very specific conditions. And I'll just touch on each of those so it's clear for the record. The first is that the amended special area plan would be as attached to the report, and it consists of two separate drawings, the 2016 current and the subsequent 2016 modified phases. One of the distinctions being that the property will be developed in phases, and only a portion of that property would be developed in the immediate future, and you'll deal with that subsequently with review of the site plan for that specific portion of the property. The second condition is the completion of Mears Boulevard, the extension consistent with the local funding agreement set forth in Resolution 2008-52. Obviously, that's of critical importance to the city. That was a condition of the original approval. It remains a condition, and we emphasize it here relative to the amendment of the special area plan. The third is a condition relative to what we referenced in ordinance 2010-14 that was actually a settlement agreement with the state who had taken action against the city in approving the original amendment back in 2008, 18, and ordinances 2008, 18, and 19, relative to a study and a potential hardening for hurricane evacuation shelter on the First United Methodist Church. Again, the applicant has agreed to meet that original condition, the condition imposed in the settlement agreement. And then lastly, the amendment of the special area plan is subject to your subsequent action and approval of the accompanying site plan for this next phase of the development. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the Commission has of me.
Any questions? No questions. The chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Second.
Beardo Lacus 514, Ashland Avenue. Not being at the last meeting, I'm not sure what the actual vote was on the first reading, and so I'm assuming it was probably a 4-0 or 5-0. And I just want to kind of talk about what the original intent and what was worked on when this special area plan was approved. And in the comments here, the staff says, "On balance, the proposed amendments to the special area plan are reasonably consistent and true to the mixed-use objectives of the original product, and that they do not change the boundaries of the district, do not change the permitted mix of uses, and do not increase the density or intensity of the use." I don't disagree with those statements. But one of the whole original concepts that was brought forward was, and Mr. Gaines, or I believe it was Mr. Gaines, when he first came through with this, was to partner with the hospital and to create a medical office building and a retail accomplice and a mixed use. At the time, we were very much working on all of these things, workability studies and sustainability, and this area was supposed to be near our mobility district and all these things we worked on. But when I look at the new revised concept plan, it shows out where the areas, all these five buildings are going to be on the east side of the main street, have taken out the area of the medical complex. And it talks somewhere in there, there's still 100 and something thousand feet left in, let's see, A, B, C, D, D and F, I believe, those were the boxes. Those would be the ones on the west side of the main street. But it was really a concept to work with the hospital and for the hospital to grow. One of the main things the hospital has said over the years is, "We need to attract more doctors. We need to expand our services." And they've done that in some ways. But I have a feeling that the changes in this concept plan will basically cut off that ability to still offer that to the hospital and to the Adventist group and anybody else who may have an interest in helping the hospital to expand their staffing. What they show as remaining are two little blocks, and part of that one block, I believe it was F, because these aren't labeled well, but they refer to it, was supposed to be part of the gateway along the access road from alternate 19 to the circular drive. That was supposed to be devoted to smaller businesses and retail. Well, with the new concept plan, that shows on the south side of that access road, basically blank space, and where the 120 apartment senior facility was to go, that shows blank. But in a modified version, they show that those potentially could be used for some office, some retail, some aspect of senior living. I understand the need to want to have this project move forward. One of the critical things is the connections of Mears Boulevard, and I understand that's a critical aspect. But I wonder if this really, this change in the plans and eliminating any kind of medical office suites or research really hinders the hospital's future growth in being able to attract doctors and other groups that they need to have the hospital expand and remain profitable. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? I just state, as I say for the record, is that a lot of things have changed in this plan. One is that there was talk about putting the parking facilities, the rest of that in there. That changed. You don't see the hospital here. Nobody can make them do some things for us, a medical office building, those type of things. So, this plan has changed, and I believe that this still gives us an opportunity to move forward, get some necessary development there, put Mears to, which hopefully will be a catalyst for properties that's right within that area to develop and do some of the things as it relates to the businesses and offices. That's what I, one of the reasons that I am supporting this. With that, I think we have a motion. Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner T. R. Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We're at item 16, Resolution 2016-04, Mears Apartment Complex Site Plan Quasi-Ajudicial.
It's Resolution 2016-08. Resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 15-76 for site plan approval for a 236-unit apartment complex in a special area plan district located on the east side of alternate US 19, approximately 550 feet south of Mears Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing effective date. It's Resolution 2016-08 by title only. This item is quasi-adjudicial. At such a hearing, the Commission acts in a quasi-adjudicial rather than a legislative capacity. It is not the Commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law as already been established. In a quasi-adjudicial hearing, the Commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the city's Code of Ordinances. The Commission may only consider evidence at the hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria, then the Commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates applicant has failed to meet the criteria established, then the Commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give the testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will present its testimony to witnesses. The city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the opportunity to speak. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have the opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given a chance to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the Commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings, a motion will be made, and a vote taken. At this juncture, I'd ask for the Commission to disclose any ex parte communications on the application. Seeing none, I'd ask anyone who plans to testify tonight to please stand and be sworn. Ask you to raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to the testimony about to given this proceeding? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Louis Serna, also of Calvin Giordano, working with staff and the applicant on reviewing the site plan application. This is the application that prompted the amendment to the special area plan that you just considered. It is for a 236-unit apartment complex. It is a quite lengthy submittal that you have in your packet. If you're going to refer to a page, I'd recommend that you look at Sheet C5. It gives you a good overview of what the applicant is proposing. In brief, he's proposing development of this apartment complex on 10.9 acres. The plan allows for the division of the property into, for an entry road, north-south connecting road, 6.5 acres for the apartment complex, a master stormwater management facility, and two out parcels for future development. The site plan itself features five buildings, a pool, and a clubhouse, and includes associated parking. And connection to the Pinellas Trail is also a consideration with this. This application was reviewed for consistency with your comprehensive plan and land development regulations. The comprehensive plan and zoning for this were, those standards are specified in the special area plan as far as density and intensity in the uses, and the plan has been determined to comply with that. The site plan proposes 398, or requires 398 spaces. The applicant is proposing 404 spaces, and they are taking advantage of a 10% reduction due to the site's adjacency to the Pinellas Trail. The site plan has been reviewed for consistency with your currency management requirements, and there's quite a bit of information in the package regarding impacts to public facilities. But in short, the application has been determined to not result in a decrease in the level of service for potable water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, recreation facility, and stormwater management, as well as traffic concurrency. This does include the requirement for the extension of Mears Boulevard that is included in the transportation analysis that was provided, and it's also included in the approval conditions. This was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee on two occasions. There are a couple of conditions that are being recommended, addressing some of the requirements specifically regarding stormwater. We've also recommended conditions addressing the future subdivision of the property. This did go before the Planning Commission, and they did recommend unanimously in favor of this, subject to the 13 conditions that are in your packet. Since approval of that, a condition number 14 was added for clarification. I'd just like to touch on that briefly. And that is just to clarify that separate site plan approval will be required for any future development on the parcels designated for the stormwater management or future development out parcels. And that is a point that I think I forgot to mention, that this site does have a stormwater management facility that is a master management facility, but they would like to reserve, the applicant that is, would like to reserve that parcel for future development in the event they can find an alternate means of handling that stormwater. Again, I can go through the conditions with you in detail, if you like, or any of the site plan conditions or the site plan details. The applicant is available to also answer any questions, and I'd be glad to entertain any of your questions.
The only question that I have right now is that, has the applicant agreed to all of the staff recommendations?
Yes.
Any questions? Commissioner Bather?
Thank you. These apartments, these are going to be market rate?
I think the applicant could probably answer that question. That is my understanding.
J.D. Elsaba, Sicomo Engineering, 8370 West Hillsborough Avenue, Suite 205, Tampa, Florida 33615. Already sworn. I'm sorry, if you kindly just.
The apartments, they're going to be market rate? Market rate housing?
Well, we are not sure exactly yet. What I believe probably, most likely, yes. They wanted to be sure that all of them get rented. The best of my ability, I'm not sure what that the rate will be, but most likely will be, of course, a market rate, would allow them to rent them all completely.
So, will there be any restrictions in terms of, like, 55 and up?
We have one building will be assigned, therefore have elevator, which is, I think you see it, the L-shaped building will be for 55 and older, and that will be the full accommodation for utilizing senior. And the rest will be mixed, you know, mostly, you know, adult. And because this one of the expectation is to utilize as the hospital, as main client to that, or staff. to that, or staff, or doctor who come for internship, or one years, or moving, so it will be a quick and close residence for that. And that's what came up, the idea behind that. So the, you just follow up was earlier when we spoke about as SAP, that's, you know, the use is really accommodating to what we have come up eight years ago when we started that project is, that will be, you know, a major use, the residential use here, major use to the hospital, which we, the expectation, it's going to go in this way. So as far as other use, like offices or retail, is still in consideration. We never been, you know, lost that entitlement, and going to be a second or third phase of this project.
Is there any funding, any government funding in place for affordable housing project here?
The best of my ability, no. There is no, you know, government funding.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I'm just happy to see that, you know, I was, I had some citizens' concern about the traffic on Mears and Alt-19 with this new project, and, and I'm happy to see that the Mears extension will have to be complete before any occupancy.
Absolutely. So we, I mean, some of you recall, we have been, you know, we work, we did master traffic study, and we spent really long time, you know, eight, nine years ago when we started with this process, of course, and, and based on that, we defined the required improvement for US-19. And now what we're going to do is, we're going to build those improvement based on the ultimate build-out. You see, we propose mixed use, which have retail, offices, you know, residential. We're building right now only the residential. However, we're going to build the ultimate improvement required on US-19, which is what we're going right now through DOT approval, of course, and DOT access and drainage and SWFMT approval to this improvement there. So the, and believe it or not, we're going through update to the traffic study, which we, you know, submitting tomorrow, we have meeting with DOT in this regard. So as far you concerned, which is great concern, as far as traffic, this is taken in full consideration. And of course, we coordinate that with the staff as far, you know, they see the improvement we're doing. So as far as US, as far as Mears Boulevard expansion, that what, of course, is going to be part, as you see, part of the condition will be completed before the CO get to those apartment complexes there. So I think, you know, as, just my personal opinion here, I've been in this project for probably close to ten years. I can tell you it's, I think, great things coming to City of Tarpon Springs, and it's really, truthfully, having any residential development is started to attract more retail, more offices, more professional to the city, and that would bring up more improvement. So I, truthfully, when it started with me, when we went back a year ago, February two-thousand-and-fifteen on this project, I was excited, because this is what going to attracted a lot of activity in the city. So I think it's, just to answer the mayor earlier, it's not the best choice, but the most reasonable choice as far as site plan, to make it in the right direction and keep going. Entitlement is still the same entitlement we can do. I mean, still, we, Phase Two can be offices or other. So, but I think that having those apartment and going to be, it's really great choice and a great, you know, like, catalyst to that, to that, to the economy, especially this center of that downtown, to bring up more, you know, people to live and businesses and other. So I think, I think it, as one of those, as engineer, but excited to see that project going. So hopefully, we're getting your approval on this and ready to answer any other question.
Thank you. I don't think there is more questions.
Do you have anything, anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I really need to hear, thanks the staff, really. The staff have did excellent job, Heather in specific, she, I knew she has been new to, to the project in, in short period of time. She worked with us closely, and so, so really, the staff did excellent job, and Ms. Lemon also at the same time in this regard.
Thank you, sir.
No other question.
Appreciate it. Other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
We get to see them right before you decide on a meeting about the site plans? This is from the backup book, what's also online. But if you look through it, I don't know, maybe, I guess things have changed since I was here, but there's a little drawing of the property, the picture. We go through here, there's a little thing from Ray Page about the fire line, and then I go back here to the back from Giacomo Licari. Dear Heather, on behalf, the following is enclosed for your use, twelve sets of construction plans, two sets of architectural elevations and floor plans, copy of stormwater drainage, et cetera, et cetera, copy of traffic impact study, electronic format and CD, a copy of the endangered threat and species study, electronic format and CD. But none of this is in the backup. None of this is online. So how can I actually comment on a site plan, or you decide on a site plan, that isn't public, or you don't, I mean, maybe y'all got a copy of this. It used to be only the P and Z people got these, and y'all got little printouts in this, or maybe separately. So I can't see how you can publicly approve a site plan that you don't have before you, and the public doesn't have access for, to even comment. What's, what is it, the copy of the endangered threat and species study? In the past, when we've looked at other properties, that's been printed and available for the public to see. Again, I go back to the concept, you know, you approve the site plan, it's different, you know, you have to go by the rules of what's currently there, but the fact that there's no site plan available for anybody to review or to comment on begs to have this issue deferred. And again, I have concerns that if this does go forward, any option or availability to provide the hospital with medical offices or places for them to have physicians come to, to be attracted to, is detrimental to their growth. They talk about future development on parcel C and E. That's, that's not enough for what's needed. And I just would say that without the proper information available to you, unless you have some other document that's not available to the public, I can't see how you can approve a site plan. And while I have a half a moment, I do want to make one clarification about what I spoke about before, about the record request with regards to the issue we discussed, whether there was a meeting or not. I did confirm that the reporter didn't even do her facts...
Sir, we're only talking about...
In regards to checking if there was any meetings. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none of the members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to make a closing statement or summary?
J.D. Elsabar, Sicomo Engineering, just, again, I wanted to bring to the attention that there is really no loss of value as far, you know, you know, medical offices, it's still viable option in the right time. So, and, and there is, I mean, it's no, that, that site plan, we see it, and it was, you know, during the P and Z meeting, and I think the staff, you know, anybody asking for a site plan, they share with them completely in this regard. Nothing to add, except if you have a question.
Please. In regard to the fifty-five and up building, there, you said there was government funding associated with that, or not?
There is no government funding.
Thank you. Does the staff wish to make a closing statement or summary?
Yes, the staff does.
Heather Earl, Appointing Director for the city. Just to clarify that situation, while it's not in the backpacket there, it is available online. This packet that I have here was also available online, and the staff report and all of the packets have available, been available in the office, just as the notice says, for the duration of this project's existence here at City Hall. That's all that I have, unless you have a specific question.
Heather, could you just touch on number twelve in the staff recommendation?
Give me one second. Yes, I can. Yeah, this was a condition that was actually the result of a settlement agreement that happened long before I came here, and essentially what happened is part of that settlement agreement, DCA came down, and the city agreed to during that settlement agreement to have this study funded. In this case, the applicant had already agreed as part of their approval, because, again, that was part of, the settlement agreement became part of a final ordinance during that time. They agreed to this condition, it just has not been done at this point, so the applicant has agreed that they will going forward, will honor this condition, being that it was the result of a settlement agreement between, between the city and DCA for their project. Any other questions?
Is there no other questions? Show, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. All the next...
Mr. Mayor, can we clarify that that was including the, the conditions? We just want to be clear that that motion included the conditions?
The resolution included the conditions, so the resolution is...
Thank you. We'll now go to Ms. Salinas, item, item number seventeen, Alter Nineteen Landscape Improvements.
As we told you, we bring it back to you, the process is moving fast, we've got approval for the state to proceed, so we had told you before we go to the final project, with the hundred thousand dollars that we have received from FDOT to do this project, that we would bring you what we're going, what we plan to submit to the money for. So with your approval tonight, and the approval of DOT already, we'll be ready to proceed with this project. Turn it over to Tom and our arborist.
Good evening. As we know, last meeting, you signed off on the agreement with FDOT. Soon after that, we did get a notice to proceed, so we're happy to be here. Greg's been working with the FDOT. This is Greg Dobbins, the city arborist, and also the project manager on this. He's been working, building with FDOT to finally get the approvals of the type of vegetation he can put in there. Of course, the objective here is to amend existing plantings along, along, planting of crepe myrtle, along with some other species, acem palms, and make it more aesthetically pleasing. This runs between Mears Boulevard and Tarpon Ave. It has a hundred, one-thousand-dollar funded by the FDOT. I don't know if you have the opportunity to package and look at what Greg has proposed, any changes to it. I'm sure Greg would be happy to stand up here and give you some more details if you require it. I know he can talk about the heights of the palms in the, some of the planters. Some of those planters will be upgraded too. I know, I'm sure people have seen them along the roadway, and they've kind of fallen over, but they all be part of this project. Have any questions, Greg?
Any questions, you know, any preference? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I, I noticed in the backup, we were given the annual cost estimated to be thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and I wanted to say, first of all, that I appreciated that being in the backup, when you, when you have a project like this. That's always one of the questions that I ask, is what's the ongoing cost going to be? And I'm just curious, does that, does that include the cost of, of labor, the cost of the maintenance, or is that just the cost of whatever we need to purchase in terms of maintenance?
That's an inclusive number. That covers labor, materials, everything necessary to maintain the plant material.
So includes our staff? Very good.
Yeah, what happens in some of these planters, there'll be some annuals, we're trying to get some color into the planters, so of course, with annuals, as Greg can tell you, they need to be changed out every, a few times a year, so it'll take a little bit of labor to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just ask this question before I forget it. If it's approved tonight, is there an estimated time of completion?
I believe we have a hundred and twenty days.
Hundred and twenty days from commencement.
If it's approved this evening, we have received a letter to proceed with design. The design is done. I have an appointment to meet with Landscape with the Division of Transportation next week to present our plan. They'll review that, however long it takes for them to review it. It's been a long process to date so far. So once they're done, give us the go-ahead. It should be no more than a hundred and twenty days in the project, including expanding, planting areas, replacing curb, the whole ball of wax, so the only thing I can't answer you to is how long DOT will take to actually do the final. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Starbend?
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for the effort they put into this and for the initiation of this project. I had the opportunity to meet with staff today and look at the project in a little bit more detail, and like I told staff in the meeting, is that I, I don't have any changes, so I think it looks great, and look forward to seeing it implemented, and really appreciate your work. It looks great, and thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comments on this item? See, and then show, entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item eighteen, authorization to pursue community garden on Burke property located at one-sixty North Range Street.
I'll start and introduce, because Commissioner Seaver's probably... What we're asking for tonight, we've been talking about community gardens for a while now. We had a bunch of sites that we had with the city. Karen Lemons, I know, was involved in looking at them, and for one reason or another, whether they ended up being part of our stormwater system or something else, there was not a good site find. Recently, we had inquiry about the Burke property down the street, and Commissioner Seaver's been talking to some citizens and working with them again on looking for a community garden. We sent our staff, our arborist, we sent Tom Function, and to meet those citizens, Commissioner Seaver, at the, at the Burke site, and believe it is viable. So what we're doing tonight is, before we go any further, we want to get the blessing of the board to move forward for, what we do at a later time is bring you back the whole final thing of the community garden, the structure, how we do it, all the particulars would come back to you for final approval, but what we're asking for tonight, since the site seems viable with both the citizens group, the commissioner, and our staff, the ability to proceed forward, and at that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Seaver.
Thank you, Mark. We've been doing such a great job in the city with growth and development and our new RO plant, and, and I just wanted to see some green initiatives added to balance out our city. I'm going to pass this down. This is actually the Dunedin Community Garden and what it looks like, but I was made aware of this property by Karen a few weeks ago, and looking at all the other sites that were not viable, this seemed to be like a site that, that might work. It was donated to the city, and it's now pretty much an eyesore. I was told by the city that they spend about eight-hundred-and-forty dollars a year for upkeep for this property, and it's still an eyesore, unfortunately, not, not the fault of the cities, but, and it's kind of interesting that this property is right across our new Eco Village development, so I thought that would be, that would kind of fit in. We have a number of residents that are here who are very enthusiastic and, and great gardeners. One of them is Debbie, who was part of initiating the Dunedin Garden and helped with the Clearwater Garden, and is their vice president, and if any of them would like to talk, I would invite them to do that. We talked about a mission for the... We talked about a mission for this garden, and also to maybe name it after Jessie Burke. So calling it the Jessie Burke Community Garden in honor of the lady who donated her property to us. As far as the mission, one of the things that the group came up with was to enhance the quality of life and strengthen community bonds by creating an organic garden that will foster environmental stewardship, horticultural education, and improved health. As a former educator, I really believe in that education part. I'd like to see us maybe partner with our grow groups, bring students from our elementary schools out for classes, and that's something that Dunedin is currently doing. And also maybe our city rec department during camps, do some educational type stuff with gardening. I think kids love to play in the dirt and see things grow. So I'd like to invite anybody who wants to speak from our group that's here who's waited all evening, and I appreciate their waiting. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience. My name's Mark Bartholomew. I live at four forty-one South Spring Boulevard in Tarpon Springs. I've been a organic gardener and permaculturist for nearly thirty years. And I've coordinated and built a number of community gardens here in Pinellas County. I was one of the citizens that accompanied the city staff in evaluating this particular piece of property. And would fully concur, it's an ideal piece of property for this type of development. We have a lot of local business interest already, and a lot of local citizen interest. One of the things that I believe is in a package that's been circulated is our, the vision and the mission, and a lot of our values. If you, I'd like to just beg your patience and go through a few of those things that I think are pertinent, whether it's this location or another. It's all relevant. One of the things that will, I'll just jump forward to, because we've already discussed the vision and the mission, is a lot of the values. And one of the primary values is healthy lifestyles. Therefore, we're promoting an organic gardening solution as a healthy outdoor activity for everyone, all ages. Encouraging families and involving their children and offering special programs for our junior gardeners. And we provide support for community members with special needs, and especially those that come from diverse financial backgrounds. We're making sure that everyone's going to be able to experience the joys of growing food organically. One of our other values is the connection with the land, which I know is extremely important here in Tarpon Springs. Therefore, we use innovative holistic gardening practices that enrich the soil and our food, while producing and protecting everything connected with our watershed here. We educate our gardeners so that they can share these practices with their families, friends, and neighbors. We conserve open space, wildlife habitat, for the benefit of all the future generations here in Tarpon. We also value the access to nutritious and affordable food. Therefore, we have distributed plots, and those plots will include those that are discounted, sponsored. And we anticipate doing work-share agreements also for these plots. Anyone can participate regardless of their financial circumstances. We offer harvest shares to local nonprofits and shelters, so that those who cannot participate directly may still benefit from the community garden. We also value personal relationships within our community. Therefore, we're promoting organic gardening as a community experience, building relationships between families, friends, and neighbors. We encourage cooperation and intergenerational dialogue between people of different viewpoints and backgrounds. We create partnerships between the community, government, schools, and local businesses. And we harvest more food than we as individual gardeners will be able to use, so that that additional food will be shared and shared out. We know that the bonds that are formed in doing these community gardens will strengthen the community and make it a vibrant and attractive place to work and live. I'd offer this time for any questions?
I don't have any questions. First thing I'd tell you is I'd fully support this. I know there's a rumor that I wasn't invited because I don't know how to garden. I just say that partly because of sunshine. Not that I would be a good gardener, because I usually kill everything that I touch. But I think it's a great idea, you know, we have a number of young people that hopefully will be involved in having that experience of growing foods. Commissioner Tarr Panty?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a good idea, definitely something that we've kicked around in the past as far as a community garden. So I don't have any problem, you know, supporting it conceptually. You know, I do have a few questions or just some ideas just to share in terms of, you know, trying to think about moving forward with it. Earlier, we heard from a lady about the impacts of, you know, commercial use in a residential neighborhood. So one that would be, you know, one of the things that I would mention is that what kind of impacts do we anticipate in terms of having people there on site, you know, hours of the day, whatever the case may be? Excuse me, what kind of impact that may have on the resident, in that particular residential neighborhood? So that said, is this for sure what we feel like is, you know, the best possible location, all things aside from, you know, having, being a special place because it was Jessie Burke's property? So the other question, you know, with that in mind, is, is this potential property or location, is it best served as, you know, this as a community garden? Or do we think with the new development going on in that area in proximity to the downtown, is it better suited by potentially going back on the tax rolls and seeing a new house there? So that's another, you know, just hypothetical question. You know, as I think about those things, in terms of the parking hours of operation, is it better to be back on the tax rolls? What's a better location? The pictures that you passed around, that was from Dunedin, it looked like their community garden is at maybe an existing park or recreation area that they have.
It's downtown, and it's part of the park.
It's part of the park. So I mean, that would kind of be, you know, my preference is that, one, is the space big enough, you know, to have the community garden, maybe that we all envision? And two, would it be better suited at maybe an existing location that we have that is kind of already a park? I don't care if it's Craig Park or the nature park across the river, the eighty acres, you know, things that already have parking in place, facilities in place. You're not going to impact the residential neighborhood, et cetera. So those are just some of my initial, initial thoughts, but I fully support conceptually moving forward.
Well, this concept's been going around for about five years now, I guess, and there have been properties that the city has looked at. One of the properties I had thought of was where the Splash Dog Park is because, but there are plans for that property for a new ramp. And according to the city manager, that would not probably be a viable spot. There is an alley behind this piece of property and parking. There's a little building on that property that's been deemed not usable and needs to be taken down. So we have looked at a parking area, but it's not going to be like twenty people there at a time. Usually with these types of situations, people come and they do their gardening, and it's during the day. So it's not the situation that we heard of earlier, I don't think. But, you know, we just thought at this time, because the city's been spending money to maintain this property, and it hasn't been developed. It would be a good start, at least for a community garden now. That's all I can think of right now.
Any, is there any? Commissioner Brown? Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Yes, I'm in support of this. I think it's a great idea, and I think Jessie would, not that I speak for her at all, but I think she would be happy that her property's being utilized in this manner. Obviously, like most things, I bring up security to make sure, like Commissioner Tarr Panty raised about neighbors and make sure that we are in communication with them and monitor it. And like everything we do with the Splash Park and everything, we kind of figure that out as we grow, but make sure that we are, we have the right, the right rules and protocols there. But I think it's a good use of this property. I had a tomato plant once that died. I'll provide more passive support, not hands-on support. But maybe, and hopefully it does well, and we can move it to, move this location to a larger space, maybe make a second one. But I think it's a great place to test the idea and not see if it works. I know, I know that, that it will work, but see kind of what Tarpon will do with this community garden. And again, I just think Jessie would be happy that that site's being, being used for this, so thank you for that.
Yeah, basically, you know, this was not a test, but this is a property to start with and maybe continue to have more properties that would be viable. But we would, moving forward, talk to neighbors and do the proper process, but this is just the start right now.
Vice Mayor? Thank you. I first want to thank Commissioner Seaver for bringing this forward, and I also want to thank the residents that are involved for bringing this forward as well. I think Commissioner Tarr Panty brought up some very valid points. But I would say that, as was mentioned, this is something that we've looked at for, I guess, five years. I think former Vice Mayor Sanger had brought this up, you know, years ago, and we haven't found a viable site to do it. I think it's time to move forward and do it. And again, I applaud those people that are involved in bringing it forward. And I think it's pretty, pretty neat that the location would be in such close proximity to the Eco Village project that was mentioned. I think there's a lot of reasons to like this location, and I'm excited to hear more about it as we move forward. Thank you.
Did anybody else want to speak? I really appreciate five-year-old Elliot back there sitting through the
After a while, because it's Vice Mayor, I'm starting every y'all for four minutes, you know?
Start the clock. Irene, start the timer. Hi, everyone. I'm Robin Sanger, thirty-six Eighty Street here in Tarpon Springs. I just want to thank Commissioner Seaver for bringing this forward, and indeed, Vice Mayor Larson, you're correct. Back when I was on the commission, we worked with the planning department to locate lots throughout the city in residential areas so that anyone in their own neighborhood could have access to a community garden, and it really didn't go anywhere. One, for example, was across from the Boys and Girls Club, which is a nice lot, but there's no water access. So that's another thing to consider. I think Jessie would be, Ms. Burke would be really happy to see this use of her property. She donated it to the city because she loved the city, and she was very much always going to the fruit stands, to the fruit markets, making sure she had fresh produce. So I think it's an excellent idea, and having it in a neighborhood where people can access it, I think, is great, you know? Personally, I wouldn't want to drive across to, across the river to, it doesn't make sense, you know? It should be where the kids can walk to it. It's right in the neighborhood for Tarpon Elementary. And the educational components you mentioned, I think, are extremely valid. So I think it's, it's just high time we did this. It's been going for a while, and I'm happy to see it move on. It's, sometimes an idea comes forward and people say, well, that was a good idea, so that's enough, you know? Like the tree ordinance, it was a great idea, but it could be strengthened. Just because an idea is good and it comes forward doesn't mean it has to stop there. So this is something that you have revisited, and you're actually doing something about it, and I think it's great. I appreciate you for doing so. Thank you.
Hi there, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Sheldon, and I'm at five nine eight Baywood Drive South in Dunedin, Florida. And I am the vice president of the Dunedin Community Garden. I think I could maybe provide a little bit additional insight into some of the comments that were made tonight. I can tell you that the Dunedin Community Garden is located in Eagle Scout Park. However, it was highly underutilized. You cannot see the park from the road, so it's not a typical public park in that sense. So this was one opportunity for the city of Dunedin to actually utilize public property in a very, I want to say, a very healthy and interesting way. I also want to let you know that the Clearwater Community Garden is located in a highly underserved community. And it was an area that is, you know, they have some challenges in terms of crime and so forth. And it was brought in, in part, one of the reasons that they agreed, and there were several reasons that they agreed to do this. But you have access to a letter written to you from Howard Wershower, who's the chairman of the Clearwater Community Garden. And he points to the Windmare Study in St. Louis, and they did a census track of fifty-four surrounded, fifty-four community gardens that were surrounded by neighborhoods. And they showed a crime reduction in both property and people, increased property values, and improvement of property, improvements in the overall appearance of the neighborhood. And I think that's also an important thing to note, so I welcome you to actually visit those two sites to just get a better understanding of really where they are. And finally, the other responsibility that I have, or the honor that I have with the Dunedin Community Garden, is being part of their education program. And based of what I've heard here tonight, you guys might want to take advantage of the education program that we offer with the Dunedin Public Library. But also, I believe that people that are involved in the Tarpon Springs Community Garden plan the same thing. And that is teaching people, especially people that come from up north, how to successfully garden here in Florida. And I do want to mention that we do keep track of the people that come to our workshops. And our workshops typically, last year, the average attendance last year was forty-seven for each of these workshops every month. But I want to say that a lot of the people that come to our workshops, they're from Tarpon Springs. So there is this desire to learn more about successfully growing a tomato plant, and it can be done. Thank you.
I don't think I can do it.
Thank you. Come on, I just don't announce people, that's all.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael Swanger. I'm a student of the St. Petersburg College Public Policy Administration Program. I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I greatly appreciate it. I want to speak on the community garden that's being proposed on six eighteenth North Ring Avenue, which was a property donated by Mrs. Burke. Over the, this past weekend, I was able to get out to the surrounding community and speak to local residents, business owners on the proposal. I would like to share their enthusiasm and ideas. In summary, the residents all received the idea very favorably, with the only one resident saying she would rather have a dog park. Together, the commu, okay, sorry about that. Other business owners and residents thought the idea was great. A resident believed that such a project would help continue the positive changes in the neighborhood by bringing together the community and generating pride. Hopefully encourage surrounding residents to improve their own yards. Another resident wanted to suggest that the garden be completely organic. A few residents thought the community garden could also serve as a memorial of some sort. One suggestion was the garden to be a living memorial, possibly named as a victory garden. Another suggestion was that the garden be a symbol of the community itself. A resident who was very concerned about the future development of the adjacent apartments, thought the garden was a, it could attract community-driven residents to the area. I also had an opportunity, opportunity to speak to two visiting Palm Harbor residents who parked their car in that neighborhood every weekend and walked down to Tarpon Avenue to visit some of the businesses down there. And they thought the garden would be another attraction for them to come and look at every weekend. I also have conducted some research on community gardens, and I reached out to Kathy Culp, who manages the City of Seminoles Community Garden. The City of Seminoles leases small plots out to residents and non-residents for a six-month lease. Currently, there's a waiting list for all plots. The most difficult part of the community garden in Seminoles was the initial cost of the project, which was a total of fourteen thousand dollars, according to an article in the Seminole Beacon. The city paid for a surrounding fence, irrigation, well, and garden boxes. Currently, the city only pays for electric for the property and pays for new topsoil every several months. Ms. Culp stated that the community garden has not faced any situation of theft or vandalism to date. And for the most part, residents actively manage the community garden through a community, community garden association, reducing much of the burden to the city. Community garden's a growing national trend, and there has been extensive research. Many of these studies have shown that the community gardens can be a great asset, building collaboration, relationships, pride, healthy communities, and even increasing surrounding property values. The CDC has listed the following as benefits. values. The CDC has listed the following as benefits. Residents have access to healthy, fresh fruits and vegetables. Residents engage in physical activity, skill-building and creating green space, beautifying vacant lots, redevi, revitalizing surrounding communities, decrease violence in some neighborhoods, and improve social well-being through strengthening social connections. After conducting research, speaking to an expert, and talking to residents in the community, I must recommend that the Mayor and Commissioners approve further development of a community garden at 116th North Ring Avenue. I must also say the initiative of the commission to pursue the community garden speaks volume about the city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you greatly for this opportunity to speak tonight. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Beer to lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I was on the board with Commissioner Sanger when she first brought these ideas to us and I still believe it's an important idea. One thing that I have to feel that's important, and they've talked about education, is too often our kids these days, and even adults, they've lost the concept of where their food comes from. You know, they're so used to either getting it out of a fast-food place or the grocery store. They're not really aware of the total process it takes to get that food from seed, to plant it, to harvest, to market, to the store, to the kitchen. And to me, this is an integral part of having our youth and other people become educated as to the importance of the food chain. And hopefully, it brings more awareness to more people about keeping our environment clean and our environment protected so we have clean spaces to raise and grow clean food. So, I'm all for any kind of community garden we can find to place anywhere in the city of Tarpon Springs. And as the gentleman mentioned, he's checked with Seminole and a few other cities and they've worked with Dunedin. The only thing I would say at this point is two things. One, we need to look at our community garden ordinance specifically to see who and what can operate community gardens. And not to put a roadblock into the fence, but I think when we pass this, it had to be either a 501(c)(3) organization, or a co-op, or some kind of a registered group, because that was part of the discussion that, you know, didn't want anybody in there. Had to be somebody who was somewhat an official group to, to run it. So, that would need to be looked at. Secondly, it doesn't hurt to start this. And if other places come where this can grow into a bigger place, that's great. But I also would recommend that before any further decisions on Ms. Burke's property is decided on, you need to go back and look at either the deed or the specifics of the will. Because I know Ms. Burke, she donated the property to the city, but I don't know if there was any restrictions on how the property could be used. And the main thing I would reference is, she might have put a clause in there that you can't sell this property, or there may be restrictions. I don't think she would have restricted this because she loved Tarpon and I think she would be happy to have her property produce food for those in her neighborhood and those who are not as fortunate to have as much access to good, healthy, organic vegetables and fruits. So, I applaud that Commissioner Seaver has worked with the residents to bring this forward and for us to move forward again on this. But I would say you need to look at a couple more things and let's go. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we got a consensus to move forward with the concepts. Um, we have appointment to the Public Art Committee and I think according to the clerk, Ms. Larson has decided not to continue. And because of the rules that they have, as far as the makeup of the board, Ms., her dad can't move up to that space, so she still will be considered as the alternate for that. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, move.
Second.
Is there any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terri Panty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie? Yes.
And on that one, we may, we'll see how it goes, but it may be in the future for the new board that comes forward, we might want to revisit those categories, because we can't get anybody in those categories that are specific. They're not doing us any good if they said vacant. So, again, that'll be something for the upcoming board, but we'll monitor and possibly bring that back to you.
All right. Thank you. Item number twenty is appointment to the Library Advisory Board. And we have two applicants. I don't know whether we have to select one. I guess we'll see what everybody's desire is as we move forward. Since nobody's looking at me, I'll say Sharon Patterson. I go to my left.
So, you're saying Sharon Patterson to do number four to?
Right. I think that's the only one. We have to just select one.
Right. And then we would have to vote on all the items.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Just to do number four. If everybody's in agreement with what I stand on.
Yeah, I would be in support of one, two, and three. And then for number four, I, I agree with the Mayor, Sharon Patterson.
Sharon's line.
I agree.
Uh, we can get a motion for that?
Move to reappoint Deborah Solikas, appoint alternate Kimon Mitchell, move current regular member Janice Fortis to fill the unexpired term of alternate number one, and appoint Sharon Patterson to, to fill the unexpired regular member, Janice Fortis.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terri Panty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. I think the other one is just confirmation from us of Clarkton Howard to the fifth seat of the Firefighters Pension Board.
Move for approval? Second.
Any public comments? Standing on. Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terri Panty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. I believe that concludes our agenda. And we will go to CRA. Let's see if I can get this right here. I now call order the regular session meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency, meeting of the City of Tarpon Spring on Tuesday, March first, two thousand sixteen, at nine oh seven. Roll call.
Chair Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Here.
Mr. Terri Panty?
Here.
Mr. Banther?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Uh, we have approval of minutes for August fourth, September ninth, September twenty-second, and October twentieth.
Move for approval? Second.
Um, any public comments? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terri Panty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Larson?
Yes.
Chair Archie.
Yes. Uh, we have our CRA two thousand fifteen annual report. Lemon.
Thank you, Mayor and Board Commissioners. Karen Lemons, Economic Development Manager. And I'm happy to present the CRA annual report for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year. Very positive report. We'll save the best for last. Just to refresh some background about the CRA, it started in two thousand and one. It was expanded two years later to include the Pappas property, six hundred tax parcels and almost two hundred and thirty acres. And our goals, obviously, are to stimulate redevelopment and to stimulate private investment and to beautify the area and increase our economic vitality in the central business district. One of the things that we strive to do since I started four years ago, and I know before that, is to be business-friendly and make sure that we, everybody that we talk to knows that we want business here in Tarpon Springs and we'll do everything we can to make their project successful. So, to that end, we have pre-application meetings. Even before it gets to the Technical Review Committee, we sit down with Building Development, Planning and Zoning, Public Services, Public Works, whoever needs to be involved in the project, to help them through the process and to make the, the actual application when it comes through much easier and friendlier for them. A lot of our businesses are small and they need that, a little extra TLC to help them through our processes. We also have made some code changes recently, as you all know. One of the ones that was recently made was our alcohol beverage licenses. Previously, it took about three months to get a license. And through the changes, now it takes about three weeks, again, with the same regulations. Since then, we have issued five already, just within our CRA. So, obviously, that's working for our small businesses. And then the second code change we made was our electronic signage for gas stations. That came about through the Circle K and Race Track projects. They both asked to have electronic displays for their gas station prices instead of having to manually change those numbers. So, that was passed thanks to the Board of Commissioners. And the, the first station that made the change is in the CRA. It was our, our Sitco Station on North Pinellas. These next few slides are some of the new businesses that opened within the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year. This is Yard of Vale. They opened in May and, you know, they made extensive renovations to their business. Johnny's Tap House, they originally opened as Johnny's Filling Station. They had a couple management changes and it's now Johnny's Tap House Grill. They've changed their menu. They've outed an outdoor patio. They're soon going to be putting a canopy over that. They did intensive exterior and exterior renovations, both using our CRA facade and the new restaurant grant. And that picture was the grand opening. Silver King Brewery, as you know, they opened in May of this past year. This was a property that was one of the three priorities, city-owned properties, that we were trying to get back onto the tax rolls and bring in new businesses. This one was turned over to the CRA so that we could offer some flexibility in how we would either sell or lease it. As you know, we entered into a lease agreement with them in two thousand and twelve. And again, they opened in May. They've been successful. Now, they've got their beers in about forty-five restaurants. The other building that we were looking at is our old Public Works building at one one five South Ring. Saint Somewhere Brewery is renovating that, as you know, recently. That was also sold and purchased by Bob Sylvester of Saint Somewhere. At the same time, we were trying to get him downtown for several years, as some of you may know. And that building was the only building that the city had that was available. It wasn't big enough. He wanted to do both a brewery and an inn and a tasting room. So, we, we looked at several other properties with him, but none of them worked. Then this property at three twelve East Tarpon came up for rent and for lease. So, he purchased that. These two properties share a backyard. So, the Tarpon Avenue property on the right, that's going to be his inn and tasting room. And then the former Public Works building, he's renovating for the brewery. And he should be opening sometime, hopefully this summer. The other benefit to that is not only getting our former building onto the tax rolls, is these two historic buildings now went through HPP. They're getting renovated. And so, we've, as you know, we've got some historic buildings that are falling into disrepair. We're getting some of those back into people who are investing into the downtown and renovating them. Speaking of renovations, the former Cucina Siciliana, which happens to be right next door to where Saint Somewhere will be going, was recently purchased by Casey Barbecue, the owners of Casey Barbecue. And they'll be relocating downtown. They've received all their approvals again from, from HPP and we're looking forward to that. And we've talked about Silver King. We've talked about Casey Q Barbecue, Johnny's Tap House. That is creating a, a need for us to have some more parking. It's becoming a vibrant area on that eastern end of downtown. So, to that end, we're going to be, as you know, putting in a municipal parking lot behind the Ring Avenue building, removing some of those old storage units that are back there and creating up to forty or possibly even fifty spaces. I know it's under design right now. And that'll be doing, and that'll be constructed in conjunction with the Ring Avenue reconstruction between Tarpon and Lemon Street, which is happening this year. And that leads to the downtown renewal. In the past year, we've welcomed eleven new businesses, four new restaurants, two bakeries to our downtown. Coming soon is Blazing Twenty-Eight Pizza. That's going to be on the corner of Tarpon and Hibiscus. Sweetie's Kettle Corn is going into the strip, the Blue Strip Building on Pinellas, thirteen North Pinellas. There's a handmade Belgian chocolate store called Dulset that will be opening next door to Sweetie's Kettle Corn. And then Tuscan Sun Italian Bistro, which will be renovated. It's a former Zante Cafe. So, we're becoming known for restaurants, boutiques, becoming vibrant. This Eco Village, this project is on Ring Avenue between Center Street. This is something that we have been looking forward to for some time, is bringing residential downtown, providing that living, walking experience. It's going to help us in attracting more of the businesses that we're trying to get downtown. They received all of their approvals in January and they will be starting construction this year. And how are we able to do some of these things is through our incentives. We have a reduced transportation impact fee in the CRA that helps startup costs, especially for our smaller businesses. We also have parking exemptions for downtown Tarpon Avenue. That was put into effect, as you remember, with the former Forbes property. As we're trying to increase our residential living, some of the spaces that we have don't allow for parking on that same site would make the project not feasible financially. So, for buildings that are located within a certain distance of a municipal parking lot, they do not have to provide parking on-site. Additional incentives that have made a huge impact are facade grants, our restaurant recruitment grants, and also the Greek Tongue Grant. I didn't include that one because it's technically not within the CRA and it's not funded through CRA funds. But the facade grant and the restaurant recruitment grant, which is the new one that you all approved just this year, have been making a huge impact. We've already approved seven of those restaurant grants since it was approved back in January. Totally, we've had forty-six projects since the grant program started back in two thousand and eleven. The hundred and eighty-eight thousand in grant funds that the city has expended, and that has leveraged almost two million dollars in private investment into our downtown, which is a huge rate of return. These next slides are just some of the facade grants, the before and afters. This is One Amazing Find at one oh six East Tarpon Avenue. This is the building at one fifty-one East Tarpon. They took it back to what it originally had looked like with the balcony on the, on the top and bottom. Johnny's Tap House, the before and after. Remember the old T. Flies? It's kind of hard. When I saw the, the picture, I forgot it had looked as horrible as it was. These are the restaurant grants. On the left, that's what the building looked like prior to all of the World Bistro moving in. And that's on the right. This is Sweet L's. All of those storefronts on Hibiscus Street are about the same size. They were terrible inside. There were homeless people living in them and they really done a tremendous job. And this is Johnny's Tap House, before and after. And then finally, we did some public infrastructure work that past year on the North Saford Recreation Corridor, finished the Splash Park with the restrooms and the pavilion and playground. And then just, I like to end with a shop local and try to, you know, encourage everyone. I know I don't need to encourage you all, but there's a lot of new businesses that are not only in our downtown, but throughout the city, and try to encourage people to shop local and come and see all the new changes and try the new restaurants. We've had a really successful First Friday last month. There's another one coming up on Friday. We had a wine walk last Saturday that was very successful, had three to four hundred people that came out for the wine walk. And I've heard over and over from people that, "Oh, I've lived here twelve, thirteen years," didn't realize that some of these businesses were downtown. And they're starting to come down for the first time now, local people, which is really what we're trying to do and we're trying to attract. So, I want to thank you all for your support in supporting us through different policy decisions that you're making and helping us to, give us the tools to attract the businesses that we're trying to create here. So, thank you.
That's it?
That's it. That's it.
But seriously, I'd just say that, you know, first, we thank you, I thank you for your efforts. We can see with this annual report and the last one, that there's a lot of great things happening in the CRA area. Businesses are coming, which hopefully with some of the other efforts as far as the First Friday, those type of things will help those businesses continue to grow and other businesses to come in. But you, as well as other staff, I know that have been involved in this project, have done, I think, an excellent job. Hopefully, in the coming future, we'll see some development where we do our little snow place, we'll have to find a little, another little snow area, but that would be a great thing to happen. But I just think that you've been doing an outstanding job, and I just want to say personally, thank you for your efforts, and all the staff efforts, you know, in terms of making this happen. It's great to see some of the programs that's been put into place, like the grant things, that actually people take advantage of it. Any, does that mean that, hey, it's getting late, y'all ready to go? Any public comments on this item? If there's none, then this would conclude our agenda. Chief?
I'm going to need about 45 minutes to make all my comments. You guys good?
You know--
No comments, Mayor.
Still turning.
No comments.
City Manager?
No, again, the next agenda, which ends up being on election night, will be very short, just a few little minor things of business. We're able to get most of the business that we need to do with this commission done tonight. Obviously, we got Lowe's on Thursday and Reload on April 1st, so we'll be able to do those two big projects before this commission changes, and again, I think this commission has accomplished a lot with staff and everything. Got a lot of positives tonight, and we had some brief periods of negativity, but that's just the way it goes sometimes in government. But I'm glad as staff and as city manager, we're able to get a lot of these things done that this commission has started, especially the two that's been on here for six years and will be going off soon, to try to get most everything, and anything we haven't, we'll be assured to continue in the future. So a light meeting on the 15th to clean up a few more minor items, hopefully get you out of there in seven or so, or whatever you're going to do on election night, and then, of course, the ceremonial meeting on April, and we'll be finished our course of business.
All right, now, clerk. Commissioner Banther?
I just want to invite everybody to the Citizens Academy graduation ceremony. You all got your invite. It's been quite successful, I'd say, so far. No credit to me, I just mentioned the idea, staff's really taken off of it, and already been having some people in the academy get involved, one with Heather's area, and one emailed us with another idea, so it'll be on the next board we have, but I would kind of like maybe a recap afterwards. Things, you know, we're going to send, I think, a survey about what we can do better, or what they like, or whatnot, and if there is a demand for two in one year, and from talks with everybody, we're way under budget, which is good. And I want to thank the mayor for how he handled the comments tonight. I think it's disgusting what has gone on, and I'm glad that he spoke up, though, and said what he said, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, everyone is invited to the Concert Beach Thursday night, Sunset Beach. Should be good weather, I think. I don't know, I made that up, I have no idea what the weather's going to be. Come out anyway, though, it's going to be a good time. Also, I wanted to mention, recently, this board passed a resolution expressing our disapproval of a fracking bill that they were looking at in Tallahassee, and I'm pleased to report to you that the sponsor of that bill has dropped it. It appears, at least for the time being, that that bill is dead. I think we were a part of a loud public outcry, basically loudly expressing disapproval of the bill in terms of how it dealt with fracking, and also how it dealt with home rule and stripping and slowly eroding away home rule from local governments. So I just wanted to mention that to you, kind of good news, and again, express my appreciation to this board for supporting that resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner Panther?
Nothing, Mayor.
No comments.
I'd just say that, Commissioner Panther, that it was your idea, you know, we all know that every time an idea comes forward from all of us, it takes staff to make those things move ahead, but it takes somebody to have an idea, and everything I've heard about the Citizens Academy is that it's been great, you know, always room for improvement, but hey, you got to start somewhere, and I just think that we were just fortunate to have great, great staff, you know, and all the accomplishments that have happened to me is because of staff and what they do. So I'd just say again, thank all of the staff for all they do, and we'll adjourn this meeting at 9:25.